This meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting and posted on the wall there, right around the, as you come in the door, is the actual Open Meeting Act. If you would, we'll ask you to stand, join with us in a moment of silence and as well, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Claussen?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
All right, and if I could, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as was provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, approval of the full agenda as provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second before us. We have someone to talk to this issue.
Just a little bit of background on this, if you would. The original contract was 2006 and it's a two-year contract with a one-year renewal after thereafter. And the current costs are $137 per round trip load, so down and back to Clarkson, including surcharge. We approved the budget, the current fiscal year budget, with not knowing what was going to transpire till now, and moving on with the numbers that we had in mind. And Valley View, the current contractor, was having issues with his trucks and things like that and found out that the costs weren't covering his expenses, basically what it amounts to. So Rob, he terminated his contract and that gives us 180 days, which expires in February coming up here. So Rob Mercer sent out bids to seven contractors and we received two, as you see in the agenda packet, with Valley View getting the low bid at $188 per round trip and the next high is $220 per round trip. With the knuckle boom failure and things that happened in last year's budget, kind of diminished some of our reserves and things like that, so we wanted to talk about that. Dennis Smith and Rob Mercer and I are all looking at the rates because of this impact that's going to have on it and we'll have to probably look into raising the rates sooner than later. And we're looking into that and don't have a number for you tonight, but just wanted to get that message out there right now. And ask for any questions that you might have.
Todd, what was the original rate, 163?
The original?
Per round trip?
Right now, it's 137 with surcharges, the fuel surcharges that's built into the contract. But the original one back in 2007 was 104.
You don't have any idea what the total would be? Didn't, I thought you said?
The total dollars?
Yeah, per trip.
Per year? That is, per trip. $137 per trip right now until this contractor goes into effect, which is $188, which is the base price. And it's locked in at 389 per gallon.
So we're looking at an increase of $51?
I'm sorry?
Increase of $51, right?
Right.
Okay.
Possibly, unless the gas goes up quite a bit, don't get a surcharge.
And Rob's looked, he's done a good job. Back in November, we haven't seen any increase or decrease, so fuel, diesel prices have been pretty steady until now, so hoping that trend happens more. Not so much with the regular prices that we saw, 15 cent jump recently on the others.
Sure.
Todd, the fuel surcharge, you said that's 389, but my understanding is the contract provides that you look at that with your contractor every week and if there's deviation in that, that surcharge can either be a positive number, or, I mean, it can either go up or it can go down.
Right.
Based upon the deviation from the 389.
Right.
So it basically can change all the time.
Right. It's a moving target by weekly and you look at some website that's quoted in the contract for, that's a national standard.
How often do we negotiate these contracts?
Yearly, basically, but it's an auto renewal and discussion between them and us.
You sent out seven bids?
Seven bids.
Got two back?
Two back.
What was the reason you only got two back, do you know?
Rob did follow-up contacts with all the seven bidders and some of the comments were is it's, don't have the time and some of it is, is our insurance is so high that we would be outlandish in the cost to bid in it, so two were only successful in bidding, I guess, in that nature, so we didn't put, we tried our best effort, I guess, so.
Not, Todd, not the city's insurance, but the trucking company's insurance.
Truck insurance, yeah, you're right.
What was the total cost last year?
Total?
For the same, for the service, what was it?
$137 per round trip.
And how many round trips, how?
1,833 trucks last year.
Trucks, okay. All right. Have we ever looked at whether we should own our own truck or not?
We're looking into that as we speak. We'll need this active in February and then we'll go on down that road and have an answer later.
Todd, is this, this contract's going to be a two-year contract, just like the former? And then they'll have a one-year renewal after that also?
Right.
Is it cancelable with notice during the two years?
180 days by either party.
Okay.
So it's really a 180-day contract for both parties?
Any else with any questions here at all? Okay, appreciate it. Good questions, counsel. Any other further discussion? Then I will ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and next we're looking at consideration of approval to purchase a replacement side-mounted fire engine truck from Smeal Apparatus for a final price of $429,320 after optional deductions by the Fire Division. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Scott?
Mayor and counsel, if I may, this is the product of a year's worth of committee work for the design specifications on the preparation of this replacement apparatus. This engine will become the primary response engine in the city of Norfolk to fire alarms. If you recall, the truck, the last truck we purchased is the primary response vehicle for the rural fire alarm, so this truck is exclusively designed for, in city responses and it will become the primary response unit. It will look and perform very similarly to our current Engine 7, which was purchased in 2003, at the time we opened the second station and expanded our staffing. And so it will functionally look and perform very similar to that truck. That truck that was purchased in 2003 will become a reserve or a second-line unit and then ultimately the 1992 truck that is the backup city engine now will be taken out of service and is being proposed to be sold as part of the resale and the package for the purchase of this truck. So staff met with a subcommittee, discussed several options regarding the specific options or features contained within this truck. I had made a request that we include the compressed air foam system as an option for this truck. We want to preserve that technology moving forward over the life of this truck and so we asked for the opportunity to include that item in an effort to not add additional cost to the total and not attempt to displace some of those dollars. We looked at ways that we could reduce or eliminate options on the truck. We identified three items we were willing to remove from that and then factor that into the overall cost. In addition, to try to meet that target of 425,000 that we put in the capital improvement program as forecasting price for this truck, we offered to defer $5,000 worth of radio purchases in this upcoming budget year to try to stay within that line item. So the culmination of all those discussions and subcommittee work has kind of brought us here this evening and would certainly attempt to answer any questions you all may have in regard to the purchase of this truck.
Thank you, Scott. Questions?
Scott, you said, so the three options that were eliminated plus the radio equipment, you feel that offsets the cost of that compressed foam option?
And then factor in the resale, we were able to negotiate a very favorable, you know, return value for our current.
Our trade-in.
That we'll be trading in. As I've mentioned to you in the past and I believe Chief Wyder did in previous years, the resale value of those just wasn't real high. We were able to negotiate a pretty good price for that. Adding all those numbers in, it gets you just below 425,000 total. So, you know, we do the best we can to give you good, accurate forecasting tools for those items, but sometimes we miss a little bit. Obviously, the goal was to try to stay within that boundary if we at all could and still have a truck that was going to be functional going forward for 20 years. So appreciate the commitment of the subcommittee to work with us on that and I appreciate the commitment of the firemen that were willing to offer deletions to help bring that cost down. Sometimes we get pretty prideful in what we want to have for features in that truck and I was pleased with their willingness to study hard on multiple pages of specifications and find ways to cut. So that was an effort to try to stay within that budget amount.
Scott, I was on the subcommittee and I appreciate the firemen also sacrificing a few of the things that they needed to keep this truck up and modern because you realized that you needed this process and keeping us under budget. That helped and I appreciate all of your work you went into this with.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Okay, appreciate it, Scott. And again, thanks to your group, too. So with that, if no further discussion, counsel, I would ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and now we're looking at consideration of ordinance number 5280, authorizing issuance of $260,000 of general obligation off-street parking refunding bonds to refund the Series 2008 general obligation off-street parking bond. Looking for a motion for consideration of?
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance 5280 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Randy, am I looking to you to give us explanation?
This ordinance authorizes issuance of $260,000 of off-street parking bonds to refund the Series 2008 general obligation off-street parking bond. Looking for a motion for consideration of?
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance 5280 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Randy, am I looking to you to give us explanation?
This ordinance authorizes issuance of $260,000 of off-street parking bonds to refund the outstanding 2008 bonds and also approves a preliminary offering, so it was included in the agenda packets. When we sent the agenda packets out, we weren't sure if the interest rates were final. Emeritus was still in the process of getting the bonds placed. They were placed at the rates that were in the agenda packets, so the numbers you have in the agenda packet, interest rates and savings amounts are all the actual amounts that we'll get from this. The rates range from 3/10 of a percent to 3.75 percent on the refunding bonds. The refunded bonds have interest rates ranging from 3.5 to 5.3 percent, so significant reduction in interest rates. The net present value savings is $35,559, which gives us a little over 14 percent of the refunded principles and that present value savings. And very good present value savings, our policy is to refund, once we get a 5 percent present value savings, these bonds just became callable and so we're getting a very good refunding here. I recommend approval on all three readings since the interest rates are based on approval at tonight's meeting. I'd answer any questions you would have, or Bruce Lefter from Emeritus is also here tonight and he could answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Counsel, any questions that you might have? Or Bruce, anything you want to add to this?
Randy, cover everyone.
All right, okay. I won't disagree with that. Okay, if no further discussion, counsel, I would ask for a short title.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation off-street parking refunding bonds, Series 2014, of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of $260,000 for the purpose of paying and redeeming $250,000 of the city's outstanding general obligation off-street parking bond, Series 2008, date of original issue, December 23, 2008, directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for the levy and collection taxes to pay the same, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
Okay, and with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5280 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5280 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any discussion? Not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5280 carries on second and third readings.
All right. Next, we're looking for consideration of Resolution 2014-3, calling the $250,000 of outstanding Series 2008 general obligation off-street parking bonds for redemption on February 25, 2014. Looking for a motion?
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of Resolution 2014-3.
Second that.
We have a motion with a second. Discussion at all, counsel? Hearing none? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-3 is adopted. And finally, on the agenda is looking for consideration of approval for the mayor to sign a letter to the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation, offering $145,000 of program income from loan repayments for a low-income housing tax credit project in the Meadow Ridge subdivision.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining from this vote, please.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And we have a motion with a second. Discussion here? Who's, are you talking to the shame?
Group effort, Your Honor.
Okay.
This is a request from the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation for $145,000 of program reuse funds that we're attempting to, they're attempting to put together a grant proposal that's trying to piece funding sources together within this grant to make the grant attractive so we can try to leverage these dollars to hopefully get a grant and do a project of just over $4 million and including, which would be a 24-unit apartment complex addition out to the Meadow Ridge area. These grant dollars or these reuse dollars are designed to be used in that area or required, actually, to be used in that area as part of, when the dollars roll down from the federal programs and the state programs into the local programs to continue to develop housing in any community, they want those dollars to stay in that general area where they were originally brought from. So this is really that approval tonight. If the mayor and council so choose to make that approval, it'd be put into a grant proposal and hopefully it'd be successful and we could move forward with that housing project. You know, I guess housing is a big topic of discussion in the city of Norfolk, I think in many communities across northeast Nebraska and, you know, at the end of the day, I think we all try to put together all the pieces of the puzzle that improve housing for our community, from low to moderate to high-income housing projects, and this would be one of those pieces of the puzzle that would be important to our community as we continue to grow our housing. Housing is needed, all of those categories, I think, in my opinion, anyway, are needed in the community, so, you know, hopefully if all of this comes together, this would be one of those pieces of the puzzle. So with that being said, Gary's here to talk directly for the Housing Development Corporation and what their intent is there and between him and I and Randy, hopefully we can answer your questions.
So those funds are earmarked to be used for the same thing that were used for the first time? Is that correct?
In a basic sense, yes.
Beg your pardon?
In a basic sense, yes.
Okay. How much, what other areas could those funds be used for if they needed?
Be used for a single-family dwelling buy-down of the prices, is that correct, Randy, when I'm saying that right?
Yes, down payment assistance is the other thing we could use these for. We can't use them for infrastructure, unfortunately, because we would have some drainage issues out there that would be nice to.
We asked that question. We already asked that because we kind of wanted to use it if we could for some drainage issues out in that area, but these funds can't be used that way. And there's an expectation also, Randy, you explained to the council, the expectation from the Department of Economic Development that these dollars, use or lose type of situation, is that correct?
Yes, if we don't use these, they'll be asking for them back. There's a limited period of time to use those monies, so we need to be getting these put into use.
So for example, those dollars could not be used for operating expenses of that particular facility?
I don't believe so. We've never asked that particular question to DED. When we've talked to DED, we always had, well, first we ask them for infrastructure and that was a no. And then it's always been either down payment assistance or some type of buy-down on the low-income housing tax credit project, like what they're anticipating now. I do not know if it could be used for offsetting operating costs and that or not. I'm really not sure on that.
We currently don't have a breakdown of what the income requirements will be for that complex if it's successful?
I don't. I don't know if Gary knows that or not.
100% of the apartment or will it be tied into like the?
I've been contacted by a couple people out in the private sector who own apartments in town and housing. They're concerned with the city being involved in housing. This money is for the grant and like Randy said, it's either we try and use it or lose it, so I don't have a problem with this, but I do have some people contacting me very concerned with us building more apartments and, you know, basically being in competition with them. So I think they're going to probably be at the housing development and that's kind of their argument there, but I did want to mention that I was contacted about the housing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or?
I've had the same contacts that are concerned about being in competition with private enterprise, with the city having a hand in the landlord business. They said they didn't have much problem or concern with us helping to administrate Section 8 housing or low-income housing, but there was a little heartburn there with us being in the landlord business, so.
If I may, Your Honor, I?
Well, I was just going to say, I just asked Clint maybe to address this a bit for us because it helped me to better understand a little bit what, how this all works, so if you would.
First of all, this is kind of a confusing area. The, you know, I hear the discussion about the city being involved in housing with this, that's really not the case. The city's involvement with this is basically, and Gary may have to correct us where we're wrong, but if we go back to the 1960s, the city of Norfolk, the city council authorized the creation of the Norfolk Housing Authority at the time, and then about 10 years ago, they changed the name to the Norfolk Housing Agency by way of state statute. And so when we talk about the Kensington downtown, that's owned by the Norfolk Housing Agency. The city of Norfolk does not own that. There is some, and then we have, and many of you are familiar with, we talk here in this agenda item as the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation. That's a separate nonprofit corporation that's aimed at providing housing to the community and that is made up of, if we looked at that, my understanding is, is that the same folks that serve as directors of the Norfolk Housing Agency are members of the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation Board of Directors. That's a pattern that has been utilized previously in Norfolk, going back more than 40 years plus with, if you're familiar with Boulevard Village, set up the same way with the corporation, with the housing agency members being directors of the corporation. So what we're talking about here is these various monies that were a grant for other, the other project out in Meadow Ridge, which was a, one of the four apartment buildings that we see out there, is owned by the same housing development corporation, is it not, Gary? And so, you know, there was down payment assistance provided to some of those folks and some various things through a variety of things. For instance, if somebody passed away before they lived there the requisite amount of time in Meadow Ridge, if they had qualified for those things and then had to relocate for whatever reason and didn't meet the holding period of the five years and they paid back some of that money, that's the money that came back to the community. And the financing, as I understand it, Randy, just says, and Gary just says, that in order for this to be part of the, you know, in order for this $145,000, which is available, as Randy says, to use it or lose it, which comprises about 3.5 percent of the entire cost of the grant application, the $4 million that would build this, these 24 units, it just needs to say that the mayor needs to authorize utilization of that money for those purposes. If you approve this and if the grant is then subsequently approved, I understand that they're kind of competitive, so not a sure thing that that's going to happen, but if that's done, then there will be some other contracts that will provide for what's done with that money and the circumstances under which it's repaid, if it actually comes back to be utilized again or if, depending upon the success of that particular project, if there is repayment of that, if it works out or doesn't. So that's kind of how we get there. We're a couple of steps removed from the city. Actually, when we do this, we go from the city to the housing agency to the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation, and I'll shut up unless there's some questions that we could answer in regard to that. I don't know if that helps at all or not.
So Clint, you were talking about that $145,000 basically is a DED grant, correct? It was initially?
The $145,000 was a combination of several sources. The bulk of it was home funds, true DED, and this is repayment on that.
Repayment of the down payment assistance.
Part of it was Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars that were down payment assistance and repayment on that. So all this money came to the city through DED, some of it was federal money and some of it was state money. The bulk of it was federal money that came through DED.
But a portion of those funds have been repaid back from down payment assistance when people didn't meet their obligation, moved out sooner?
Yes.
Okay, so my question would be, is, at this point in time, is there a greater need for the 24-unit apartment complex or are we in greater need of another $145,000 out there in basically, essentially, DED funds for down payment assistance on buying new homes? I mean, what's, where's the need lie? I guess, is that kind of a study we looked into before we committed to?
I think the answer to that is both. You know, I don't know which one trumps which, councilman, you know, it's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but.
Well, I guess you could answer in a way, now, to correct me if I'm wrong, Meadow Ridge is in the process of probably maybe eliminating some of the down payment assistance with people moving into their apartments, is that, is that correct? Because of this timeframe?
And going to a market rate?
Yeah, going to market rate.
I believe that's to be the case, but I'm not positive.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, is it now, with that happening, are there a bunch of renters that we could possibly be pushed out of those apartments because of the upcoming market rate and now we see a greater need for this particular project because we need more? You know, you stated it was 60 percent of median income, correct, to qualify to live in those apartments? I'm trying to get.
I'm trying to get, in my mind, I'm trying to get what's more important. The six, I mean, both are extremely important, obviously, but are the funds better used in an apartment complex with 60, 60% median income qualifications, or better used for down payment assistance on housing with a, you know, obviously, those qualifications are quite a bit different? You go off median income and family members, how many family members you have, to qualify for certain, the cost of certain homes? I don't know what's, you know, we've, we've had housing meetings and discussion, and I know some of the, a few, one of the councilmen's on that board, but is that, you know, when we take these funds, a hundred, that to me is quite a bit of money out there that could be used either way. I just would like to know what would be, I guess.
Well, you gotta ask yourself, which one's gonna leverage the most housing units? You know, I don't know how much down payment assistance would, a hundred and forty-five thousand, depends on how you split those, split those dollars up and to leverage it for down payment assistance. I don't know if that's 10 homes or 15 or 20 or 5.
A lot of times, they'll do it in $10,000 chunks.
So.
So, 14, 14 homes.
Versus a 24-unit apartment complex. As far as need, I think the community's pretty right for need on both fronts. I mean, when we go to the Housing Task Force, and Councilman Merrill can speak to that directly, the housing need is pretty, pretty profound, not only in Norfolk, but our area communities as well. So, when you look at the federal programs, you know, it's kind of, in my mind, anyway, it becomes a philosophical approach of how you, how you really want to maximize these federal and state programs that are available to us, you know? The conservative approach would be maybe not to use federal dollars, but federal dollars are always out there, and some communities are gonna use those dollars, and you have to look at your need of low-income housing, and you look at the big picture, and you try to get folks into homes that would have either apartments or homes that would have really no other ability to really get into those homes otherwise, and are you meeting a strategic need in your community? And, you know, those are philosophical questions that are sometimes hard to grasp, I suppose, but if you, you know, in my mind, anyway, if you walk around or look around our community very long, you'll see that need is present. So, I think, you know, I like to see these dollars be used in a way that can maximize and get some federal grant dollars in our community and, and then get a new set of apartments on the books that, that meet that need.
Well, the.
It's a hard question to answer completely.
The, the housing, the need for housing is widespread, as you, as you mentioned, LMI or not. The letter states that the program reuse funds are specifically for Meadow Ridge subdivision. We don't know whether you're building apartments or whether you're building houses. So, those dollars cannot be used anywhere outside of that subdivision.
Correct.
So, the, we really don't know at this point in time what they're going to help. I mean, really, it's just the, it's the, it's just reusing those funds. So, we really don't know at this point in time whether it's houses or apartments, but it's helping to get the grant. Is that basically correct, Randy?
I'm not sure I understood the question. It has to be used in Meadow Ridge, and it can be used for either down payment assistance or to go to as seed money for this low-income housing tax credit project, either one.
Yeah.
But we don't, but you're correct, councilman. We don't know if we're gonna get the grant, so you don't know for sure what the end game is gonna be on that. So, you know, you try to leverage those dollars and seek a grant that's gonna bring an additional four million, or, you know, 3.8 million dollars, 3.9 million dollars into your community.
Well, and seeking the grant is correct. You can't put the cart before the horse, so.
Right.
We don't know. Without the grant, we don't know what we're gonna do anyway.
That's correct.
Randy, do they give you a concrete date on the deadline, or they're just saying you need to use those ASAP?
There's a concrete date, I believe, on, there's two pieces of that. I think it's the Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars. You've got to reuse that within 18 or 20, I think it's 24 months. And the other one, they don't have a specific drop-dead date. They just encourage you to get that money out there and get it reused, and I expect that they will, if we don't reuse it, they will eventually be coming and asking for it back. I know one of the programs does have a definite, you gotta have activity within, I believe it's two years. And the other one, I don't believe has a definite deadline.
Any other questions or comments?
After the hundred and forty-five thousand is, you know, if we say we do this, we get the grant, and it goes towards, we build a 24-unit apartment complex, within the Housing Development Corporation, within their program, will there be any funds left to, for down payment assistance, or will that be strictly with the DED moving forward?
We will, Housing Development Corporation, I don't believe would ever have any money available for down payment assistance.
I guess I'm, this is all tied to Meadow Ridge, I guess, so that'd be.
But there, there's a possibility that we get more program income back within Meadow Ridge. If people had had the existing down payment assistance move out, that could be repaid to us. Meadow Ridge Partners, who has the three original apartment buildings out there, that's the big source of this reuse money we're talking about, if they have residual receipts, we'll get payments on that home loan, and that's what 120,000 of this money is now. I don't anticipate there being residual receipts going forward. I think we've probably got all we're gonna get out of that, but it's possible, but I don't think so.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns or comments? If not, are you ready to vote? Please do.
All council members. Council members voting in the affirmative. Council member, you're an abstaining. Motion carries.
Okay. Seeing nothing further on the agenda, then, we are adjourned.